Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I will call this meeting to order Monday, March 28, 2022, at 4:30 p.m., and I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo to verify and validate the form for me.
Mayor Alfonso Ocaña.
Here, ma'am, present.
Mayor Cortez Cortés Gómez.
Present.
Councilwoman Nora Yonza Lizgabza.
Here.
Councilwoman Alberto Vera.
Here.
We have established a full forum. Councilwoman Lita Placa has not arrived at this time.
And he's not, he hasn't indicated he's going to be in soon, right?
No.
Okay. We're going to move forward anyway unless somebody has any information that he has, that he's on his way in the last two, in the next two, three minutes. No information? Okay. And I'm going to move forward and ask Mr. Perez for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if I can have everyone, please stand for the invocation pledge. Almighty God, may your light guide our day and your spirit bring us peace, infuse it in our hearts the light of your divine wisdom and open our minds that we may make the best decisions tonight. God of mercy, we pray for Ukraine, for all humanity distorted by war, and for all the lives lost, homes seized and peace broken. God of mercy, we ask that war may end in peace and spread throughout the world. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ. Here, son. Amen.
Let's lead this to the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I'll move on for presentation in our last room. Ms. Rocha, the proclamation, item number one, please.
Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community, whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband, internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities; whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes in addition to books; whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources; whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually; whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population they serve and ensure equity of access for all; whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons; whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status; whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all; whereas libraries, sorry, whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3 through the 9th, 2022, to be National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to connect with the library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services proclaimed on this 20th day of March, 2022.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, ma'am.
Proclamation as read.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. This proclamation is approved 5-0, and here it is, so we can give it to.
I just wanted to say I do have here Lizgabza. She's a treasure for our board.
Lizgabza, you have the, you have the.
Lizgabza, thank you, thank you, sir.
And then we'll let you have the mic. Yeah. And once you speak, then we can have a picture with the council.
Okay. I know that our librarian, Myra Rocha, which we're extremely proud of for all the programs that she offers, she has placed a book, I believe, at the places and is well on the floor. So please, if you have one available, please take one, as well as the calendar of events that are planned for next week, which is National Library Week. And City Council, thank you so much for your support. The library has not looked better. We're so proud of our facility and the assistance that we get financially and all that you do for the library and for the citizens of Mission. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's do the picture.
Can we hold up our books for the picture?
Do we need the books or not? Right here in the front, right here.
Lizgabza, you have the, you can have all the.
I think they can come up. Yeah, here. Can we have them come up? It's just two of them.
Yes, we can. Can you make this?
Can you, can you come up?
Up here, so we can get it. Player hook in front.
All right.
Player hook in front. Thank you. Thank you for the vote. Calling for item number two of presentation, Ms. Mungia, you have the floor, ma'am. You have item two and item three, ma'am, at your disposal.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today we'll be presenting to you our employees of the month for January and February. We will start with January of this year. Our employee of the month is Joe Salasad, an accountant in our finance department, who was nominated by Michael Elizalde, our grants administrator, and I'd like to ask Joe, Michael, and Ms. Vela to join me up here in the front. And the nomination reads as follows. The City of Mission implemented its Thrive Vaccine Incentive Program back in 2021. After consulting with many companies on the operations needed to successfully execute and manage the program, Mr. Salasad took it upon himself to develop a system that would accurately allow the city to implement the program with a user-friendly approach. Aside from saving the city several thousands of dollars from investing in software, Mr. Salasad developed a tracking system using available resources that was both effective and efficient. As a result, the city has been able to serve approximately 7,000 residents who have participated in the Thrive Program. During distribution events, Mr. Salasad always wore two hats, one being his financial officer hat and the second being the IT support on standby. Naturally, there were occasions that Mr. Salasad had to think on his feet to resolve issues that presented themselves, and he did so with excellent leadership and without hesitation. Thank you, Mr. Salasad, for your time and dedication to our Thrive Vaccine Incentive Program. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed. Joe, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Thank you. We have the, we have groups in the council. Ms. Mungia, you have the next item. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor. Our employee of the month for February is Mr. Juan José Muñoz Hernández. He is a heavy equipment operator, too, in our Streets Department, and he was nominated by his supervisor, Gabriel Diaz, a street supervisor. If they could please join me up here in the front. And the nomination reads as follows. Mr. Hernández's dedication, vision, and hard work have helped the Streets Department accomplish many projects. He is always ready and eager to report to work and understands the importance of our inclement weather duties. Every time there is inclement weather in the forecast, he is the first one to say, "I am available and ready to work." Once it begins to rain, he is the first one out in the field monitoring our areas and pumps. Our residents greatly appreciate his presence, knowing the situation is being monitored. He has also shown his coworkers unique skills as an operator. He has been instrumental in teaching our new and existing employees how to operate various types of heavy equipment. Thank you, Mr. Hernández, for all you do for our department and community.
Congratulations. Thank you for the citizen submission. We present to you the small platform, small certificate of she is important. And now you want to come over to the, to the council. Congratulations. Thank you for the presentation. Good job.
Thanks.
For developing the. Thank you. Call for presentation number four. Ms. Wright, you have the podium, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a very long time. It's good to see you all again. As you may be aware, the National Butterfly Center unfortunately remains closed to the public at this time in the wake of attacks promulgated by right-wing extremists who came to our community to disturb the peace. We are open at this time to members only, but I came today specifically to thank the city and Chief Robert Dominguez, chief, and the Mission Police Department for all that you have done for us over the last couple of months. We look forward to reopening safely with everything that the security consultants have recommended for us so that everyone in our community feels safe visiting and we can continue to enjoy the quality of life for which Mission is known. Speaking of that reopening, we hope to do that in April, and we intend, hopefully, to do a reopening and ribbon-cutting with the Mission Chamber of Commerce, invite everyone in the community, and we might have to do it Saturday, April 23rd, which would be our big free Earth Day celebration. We had hoped to reopen before then, but getting materials and contractors in place still at this time is, is tough, so we're experiencing more delays. But we've invited the Upper Valley Art League, Mission Animal Control, the library, and others that we hope will participate, Parks and Rec, so they can promote all of the other programs and amenities available, especially during this summer. And I left the office in a hurry and forgot the Pollinator Power Book that we have. It's a bilingual educational booklet for students that we intend to have the library distribute this summer. It has a free admission pass for anyone in the community on the back of it because we will not be doing summer programs this year. But we will be facilitating community engagement for free in that way, and we also intend to resume our campouts at the National Butterfly Center. So for almost 10 years, we've been doing a sleepover under the stars, and we've done this with Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and the community, and we want everyone to come out this year and spend the night at the Butterfly Center, fish on the river, enjoy the hike and bike trails that we're attached to, Benson State Park down the road, and really do all that we can because this event goes a long way to contradicting the lies that are told about Mission and about Borderlands communities, about us being dangerous and lawless when we all know that that is false. The next thing is, the NABA Biennial Meeting is returning to Mission, Texas, this year. So we're very excited about that. Between NABA, the North American Butterfly Association, and the National Butterfly Center, our membership has swollen to almost 20,000 people. Now, only a fraction of those attend the biennial meetings, but we do expect it to bring several hundred people to Mission this fall, October 29th to November 1st, for what will be the 26th Annual Texas Butterfly Festival. And we certainly hope to have the city's support for that event and engagement again and invite you all to the banquet that Monday night to enjoy our speakers, the camaraderie, the appreciation of our guests, and the margarita machine, which is always a highlight. So thank you very much for everything past, present, and future.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Item number five, Ms. Enrique, you have the podium, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council. So wonderful things happening at the chamber. We are rolling out our new literature piece, and this is a condensed version of our membership packet, and this is a brochure that we have. So pretty much anyone interested in the chamber, we can carry these around in our purse and just kind of recruit on the spot, and, and it has the membership application there, and then they're able to let us know how they'd like to be invoiced. So this is a nice little treat that we're rolling out, and we're hoping it's successful. Okay, so moving on, we have our Lunch and Learn Business Tax Compliance. One of our chamber members, CAS, is, is hosting this event for us, and it's giving an update on business tax and what to expect this year. We do have limited slots available, but it is available for chamber members. Lunch is included, so anyone interested, they're still able to sign up and join us at the seat building for the Lunch and Learn this Wednesday. This Thursday at 2 o'clock, we do have a ribbon-cutting ceremony with Generator Supercenter of the Rio Grande Valley, and they are here in Mission, so we do invite a representative from the city to come join us. Next Thursday, we do have another ribbon-cutting ceremony, which is Go Car Wash, and that is off of Conway, and we're really excited about it. That one will be at 10:00 in the morning, and then that afternoon, we do have a member spotlight mixer with Gonna Logistics from 5:00 to 7:00. And the fundraising continues for the golf tournament. It's proudly sponsored by Gonna Logistics, and the whole sponsors, they begin at $250, and the teams at $500. So anyone interested in having fun on a Friday, join us for golf and bond and make business relationships as well. And that's all I have this evening, mayor and council.
Thank you. Any questions by the council?
Thank you, my lady.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. I'm calling for item number six is, we're going to have Mr. Perez here to answer any questions for the council on the departmental reports and looking guidance from the council.
May I like to make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second. Any final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and departmental reports are approved 5-0, and moving to item number seven, citizen participation. Ms. Carrillo, can we have the first person?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Cesar Castañeda from Francisco y Madero.
Señor Castañeda, su nombre y su domicilio, y tiene. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cesar Martín Castañeda Ramírez. Soy representante del Comité de Ciudades Hermanas de Francisco y Madero Coahuila. Asimismo, me acompaña Abel Ramírez, que es secretario del Ayuntamiento. Pásenle para acá para que lo conozca la gente porque tenemos, estamos en, en video también. La forma de venir aquí ante ustedes es hacerle un reconocimiento, un agradecimiento por algunas donaciones que nos han hecho llegar el día de hoy, que son algunos trajes de, de, para protección de enfermeros, y así unas, unas computadoras. A lo mismo, tenemos pendiente la donación de unos vehículos, que en eso estamos en revisión mecánica, pero sin duda es el agradecimiento total por parte de nuestro alcalde, el doctor Jonathan Avalos, que les brinda un, un estrecho enlace de amistad y seguir continuando con estos enlaces y que no nos olviden, que sigan con nosotros particionando. Nosotros estamos actuando con ustedes en la elaboración de los altares de muerto en las fechas de, de Día de Muertos, pero más que nada, el venir aquí es agradecerle profundamente de todo corazón de toda la familia de Francisco y Madero. Muchas gracias.
Ms. Lerma, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you briefly translate in English for the sake of the audience that is here and the public?
My pleasure, mayor and council. We've got Cesar Castañeda, who's a, he's a committee member of the Sister Cities Committee in Francisco y Madero, along with their city manager, if you want to call it, in Francisco y Madero. They come here representing the mayor, Dr. Jonathan Avalos. Their, their real reason for being here today, mayor, is we had surplus, some items, several meetings ago, and had designated them to be conveyed over to our sister city of Francisco y Madero, and they're here today to pick them up. And of course, more than anything is to let the council know that they're very appreciative of your donation to their, to their city. There are items that certainly we could, we had no use for them, but certainly will benefit their, their community tremendously. So on behalf of all the citizens of Francisco y Madero in Coahuila, they want to say thank you to the council and to you, mayor, for thinking of them, and of course, want to continue the sister city relationship that they have. They come, you know, offering their, their support culturally when we have our Dia de los Muertos event, and soon we'll be having another festival that we want them to also participate with us. So again, they're, they're saying, "We're here to support you. Thank you for supporting us."
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lerma.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias por todo. Saludos al alcalde y todas las ciudadanos de ahí, del pueblo de ustedes.
The next person, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Greg Forbes from the Lamontry Estates.
Yes, sir, Mr. Forbes. Please name an address for the record, and it's my understanding that I'm going to use my chairman discretionary powers into assisting you, instead of having every single one of you come up and, and do your two minutes, that I will extend it to five minutes or more if, if you need more to finalize a concept or, is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Gregory Forbes. My address is 1510 East Business Highway 83, Unit G6. And Honorable Mayor Ocaña and councilors of the City of Mission, my name is Gregory Forbes. I have the privilege and the responsibility to appear before you this afternoon to speak to you as president of Lemon Tree Estates. I'm here along with several of our residents to appeal to you and ask you for your assistance in resolving a removal, a removal and reconstruction of approximately 650 feet of a screening and security barrier required by City Ordinance Section 98-15 that addresses landscape regulations. This ordinance recognizes our need for security and privacy of our residential properties and the commercial property to our north and around the entrance to Lemon's, Lemon Tree Estates. Lemon Tree Estates Incorporated is located near the intersection of East Business Highway 83 and Stewart Road and consists of 172 privately owned lots with a population of approximately 270 people. Presently, 52 of those lots are occupied by permanent residents of the City of Mission, with the other lots occupied seasonally by the lot owners. When Lemon Tree Estates was established in 1976 and transitioned from an onion field to a residential community, there was a need to reinforce security and privacy. We have documents reflecting the encouragement of our park by the Police Department of the City of Mission to construct a fence along Stewart Road. This barrier was built by our park and remains the only fence that Lemon Tree Estates owns. Currently, a park assistant committee patrols the park on a rotating basis for the security of property and compliance with established covenants. The residents of Lemon Tree Estates desire to maintain a safe and secure community and have invested significantly in cameras and other measures to document suspected illicit activity. As you should be aware, a significant portion of the fence owned and established by the commercial property separating Lemon Tree Estates from the East Business Highway 83 was destroyed by winds in May of 2021. Other segments have been damaged over the last 40-plus years as well. As stated in your ordinance, it is the responsibility of the commercial property owners to construct and maintain the barrier between the commercial and residential properties. Our legal counsel has been in communication with the city attorney, Mr. Martinez, and your code enforcement supervisor, Ms. Dimas, to state our concerns. My reason for appearing before you this afternoon is to ask for your assistance in resolving this issue in a timely manner. It is not the intention of Lemon Tree Estates to be confrontational with anyone, but only to be good neighbors and to ask our commercial neighbors to comply with the City of Mission ordinance. A properly constructed eight-foot-high opaque composite fence would add to the value of this commercial footage and frontage and enhance the beauty and security of the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our concerns, and also you have a package of pictures that will help you to visualize the concern that we have. Should you have any questions, I certainly will attempt to answer them.
Because you're approaching us under citizen's participation, we're not allowed by, by regulations to be able to respond to you, but the item will be moved over to our city manager for his review, and first thing in the morning, he may give you a call and.
Very good.
And you can provide him information.
Thank you.
And in his discretion, we need to put an agenda item together. It will be done in the next city council.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Could we ask anybody that was here in reference to that item to stand, just so we can have a.
In favor of, yeah. Yes, just the show of, of numbers for us as, as we, how many are here based on, on the same agenda item or, or his? You all could stand, please, so we can see who's here and, and, you know, and I'm just going to let you raise your right hand if you all are in favor of replacing the fence, you know? Okay. That, you know, because, you know, there's two sides to a coin, right? So, so, but I just wanted to, to do that. We recorded?
18, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. commercial property separating Lemon Tree Estates from the East Business Highway 83 was destroyed by winds in May of 2021. Other segments have been damaged over the last 40-plus years as well. As stated in your ordinance, it is the responsibility of the commercial property owners to construct and maintain the barrier between the commercial and residential properties. Our legal counsel has been in communication with the city attorney, Mr. Martinez, and your code enforcement supervisor, Ms. Dimas, to state our concerns. My reason for appearing before you this afternoon is to ask for your assistance in resolving this issue in a timely manner. It is not the intention of Lemon Tree Estates to be confrontational with anyone, but only to be good neighbors and to ask our commercial neighbors to comply with the City of Mission ordinance. A properly constructed eight-foot-high opaque composite fence would add to the value of this commercial footage and frontage and enhance the beauty and security of the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to hear our concerns, and also you have a package of pictures that will help you to visualize the concern that we have. If you have any questions, I certainly will attempt to answer them.
Because you're approaching us under citizens' participation, we're not allowed by, by regulations to be able to respond to you, but the item will be moved over to our city manager for his review, and first thing in the morning he may give you a call and...
Very good.
And you can provide him information for...
Thank you.
And in his discretion, we need to put an agenda item together. It will be done in the next city council.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'll do that.
Mayor, could we ask anybody that was here in reference to that item to stand just so we can have a...
In favor of... Yes, just the show of, of numbers for us as, as we... How many are here based on, on the same agenda item or his... You all could stand, please, so we can see who's here and, and, you know, and I'm just gonna let you raise your right hand if you all are in favor of replacing the fence, you know? Okay. That, you know, because, you know, there's two sides to a coin, right? So, so, but I just wanted to, to do that. We recorded?
Eighteen, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, the next one on the citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo.
Here I go. I don't have anyone else.
Do we have anybody in electronics that has indicated that they, they want to speak No? Okay, if we don't, then, then I'm gonna close the citizens' participation and move into public hearings, and I'm gonna go with the planning and zoning recommendations on item number eight, the rezoning. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number eight is a rezoning for the north 75 feet of Lot 30, Bellwoods Company Subdivision C. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Introm to C3 General Business. The applicant is Javier Villarreal. The subject site is located 780 feet north of West Mile 2 Road along the west side of North Conway. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north and west and general business to the east and south. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone does comply with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff is recommending approval. This is a public hearing. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? If you're in favor or against this rezoning, please approach the podium at this time if you're at the audience. State your name and address and whether you're in favor or against the rezoning, and you would have two minutes to discuss. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask, is there anybody under electronics that are, wants to speak on this public hearing on this or against this rezoning? We don't... Okay, I'm gonna close this rezoning, public hearing, and, and ask for the guidance of the council.
Ms. Susie, is Mr. Villarreal here?
Mr. Villarreal, no. He's not present.
I would have liked to meet him. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I move for approval? It's presented.
Yes, we recognize you for approval. Do I hear a second? We have a second. In this opening for final discussion by any of the council members? Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries for the record. Ordinance 5151 is approved 5-0, and I'm calling for a public hearing of item number nine. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number nine is a rezoning for the east 165.80 feet, more or less out of Lot 1 and the north half of Lot 24, Bashan Subdivision, Unit Number 6. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Introm to C1 Office Building. The applicant is Julio Cesar Bravo. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately half a mile north of Mile 2 along the east side of North Inspiration. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north, residential to the east and south, and duplex, fourplex to the west. The future land use map shows this area as low-density residential. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Staff recommended denial. Planning and zoning recommended approval. There was a person in opposition to the request. The concerns voiced during the PNC meeting were in regards to property values, increased traffic, and safety for the children. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. Give us your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? Okay. Yes, sir, you can come and identify yourself, name and address, and, and speak either in favor or against the rezoning.
My name is Hector Calazos, PO Box 1615, here in Mission, and I'm helping the bros in this. This is going to be, let's y'all see here, a state-of-the-art medical clinic, and I don't think the person, whenever... We had a really bad experience in the planning and zoning meeting because we couldn't hear, we couldn't talk, and we could barely hear. We did hear some people and saw the writing on the opposition not knowing what this was going to be, okay? This office building will be approximately, probably something where under 5,000 square feet, and it's gonna be an adult clinic and also pediatric clinic. So you're gonna have a medical facility, a new building in Mission that will be built helping the residents of the city. And if you look in that same area, 3702 Inspiration, there's a Dollar General one block away, which will have much more traffic than this will because this is just gonna be on appointment basis. You have two supermarkets near there, closer. It's gonna have a lot more traffic than this will. You have a washetery that's open 24 hours almost across the street from this will have much more traffic. What I'm getting at is all this is going to do is upgrade the area, upgrade the community, and make it an addition, having a new doctor's office in the City of Mission. Any questions?
This is a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna call for electronics. Is there anybody in electronics? There's nobody in electronics, so I'm gonna close this public hearing rezoning and open it for guidance from the council. Council, you have the floor.
I want to approve the rezoning.
Okay. We have a motion to approve in a second. In this opening for discussion, any of the council members want to discuss any items or have any questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance number for the record is 5152, and it's approved 5-0.
No, Mayor, I need, I need to not vote.
Oh, you abstain?
Yes, abstain.
Okay, make sure that you get the paperwork with Ms. Carrillo taking care of. I'm sorry, I retract that, and the ordinance 5152 is approved 4-0, and 4-0 is enough to, to turn over the staff recommendation for denial. Am I correct?
It's the planning and zoning that you need to worry about, so since you're going, was there a recommendation? Just these three votes.
Okay, just wanted to double check. 5152, got it? Susie?
Yes.
Okay. Calling for item number 10 in a public hearing, and you have the floor, Ms. Deluna.
Item number 10 is a rezoning for that 1.30 acre portion of Lot 4, J. Leslie Subdivision. This is from C3 General Business to R3 Multi-Family. The applicant is Nyein Abbey Management LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately eighth of a mile west of Taylor Road along the south side of Business Highway 83. Surrounding zones include general business to the east and west, multi-family residential to the south, and public and, and heavy commercial to the north. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. However, an R3 is a lesser dense than a general business zone and perhaps a better neighbor. PNC and staff recommended approval. This item, it's a public hearing. It's now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against the rezoning? Please approach the podium at this time if you're in the audience. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask, is there anybody in electronics? Nobody's in electronics, so I will close this public hearing for item number 10, and I'm gonna ask the guidance from the council.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is opening for discussion by any of the council members. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries for the record. Ordinance 5153 is approved 5-0, and I'm calling for item number 11 as a public hearing. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number 11 is a conditional use permit. This is for a drive-through service window for A1 Professional Dry Cleaners at 2515 South Colorado Suite 11. This would be Lot 2, Block 2, Santa Lucia Development Subdivision. It's currently zoned C3 General Business, and the applicant is A1 Professional Dry Cleaners. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Colorado and Taylor Road. The applicant has leased a suite within the 13,201 square feet commercial plaza to have a professional dry cleaners with a drive-through service window. Several tenants have successfully operated the use of the drive-through window from this location in the past. The last approval was on December 16, 2019, for life of use. Since the conditional use permit, permit is not transferable to others, the applicant wishes to apply for their own permit. Access to the site is provided off of Colorado and Taylor Road through existing 24-foot driveways. Days and hours of operation are Monday to Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00. They're proposing two employees for, to manage this operation. There are a total of 86 parking spaces held in common for this plaza. PNC and staff recommended approval for a one-year reevaluation to assess this new operation, compliance with building fire and sign codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, and obtain a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? If you want to speak, approach the podium at this time if you're in the audience. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm gonna ask for electronics. Do we have anybody in electronics? We don't have anybody in electronics. I'm gonna close this public hearing for item number 11 and ask for the guidance on the, from the council. Council, you have the floor.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
We have a second, and this is opening for discussion. Any of the council members? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item 11, ordinance number for the record is 5154, and it's approved 5-0, and I'm gonna move to consent agenda section of the agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling any item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. Consent agenda item 12, consent agenda item 13, consent agenda item 14 with ordinance 5155, consent agenda item 15, consent agenda item 16, consent agenda item 17 with resolution number 1768. What is the wishes of the council? Is there anyone you want to pull?
Make a motion to approve.
We have, we have a motion to approve all, all items.
Yes.
In a second. Final, final chance for any of the council members to pull any of the consent agenda items. Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All consent, consent agenda items have been approved 5-0 for item number 12, item number 13, item number 14, which is ordinance number for the record 5155, item number 15, item number 16, item number 17 with resolution number 1768, and I'm calling now for the agenda item of approvals and authorization with item number 18. Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, item number 18 is a preliminary plot approval for Sendero Phase 1 subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of 54.338 acre tract of land out of the south end of Portion 52. This is currently zoned PUD Plan Unit Development, Single Family Residential. The developer is Rhodes Development, Inc., and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. The proposed division is a part of a master plan located approximately 397 feet west of South Inspiration Road and along the south side of Mile 1 South Road. The developer is proposing 153 single-family residential lots. They will have city water, city sewer. They're proposing 11 fire hydrants via the direction of Fire Marshal. City engineer has approved, has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, provide water district exclusion, comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve based on this, with the staff and city manager recommendation approval on all of the required items.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, we have a second in this opening for discussion by any of the council member. Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 18 is approved 5-0, and moving for item number 19. Ms. Lasarde, you have the floor, sir.
Edi Saldi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 19 is the City of Mission Parks and Recreation Department is seeking authorization to submit a grant application for the 2022 National Fitness Campaign and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas Grant Sponsorship Program. The grant will support the purchase of outdoor fitness court equipment and installation. The total project cost is $167,350, and the maximum grant award is $50,000 and allows up to $20,000 of in-kind contributions pertaining to in-house construction if applicable. If an in-kind contribution are applicable, the remaining local cash match of $97,350 shall be committed by the city. Before providing our recommendation, I'd like to present a two-minute video that was presented.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. With 200 fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started.
Hi, I'm Mitch Manajid, founder of the National Fitness Campaign.
National Fitness Campaign was founded in 1979 when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the 21st century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our Seven Movement Seven Minutes system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives so that each day is better than the last. This year, 2,000 certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. We'll also be hosting training camps on college campuses across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs, learn the moves, and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond 200 cities and colleges, we're now partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for pedestrian infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within 10 minutes of population centers everywhere. We're now committed to raise $150 million to bring the campaign to 1,000 cities and schools, building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us, and let's make world-class fitness free.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ma'am. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I was just wondering how long would it take to find out for the approval, and has Mr. Benson chosen which park it would be at? Just out of curiosity of where in Mission. I'm sure we'll get it.
Sure. So what I can comment on is, yeah, we have had a pre-application meeting already with the, the National Fitness Campaign, who, who have been awarding these grants. They would like the approval from council so we can get that direction and we can move forward with the application, so I believe they're trying to shoot for this fiscal year where we can get this done.
All right.
Where is the location?
I think Brad had selected three different parks. I'd be, would like to hear some comments from Brad.
Yes, thank you.
I can appreciate your questions, and they're, yes, they are concerning. We thought of three different locations. One was Hollis Rowledge Park. We've got a group of people out there that like to exercise, and they want more than just a trail to run on or soccer fields to play in, so Hollis Rowledge is just one park. We thought of the possibility of the west side of Lyons Park, and also we thought possibly they're going to Benson Palm Community Park, because that's a big open area. We've got a lot of open land. We could use it out there. And another possibility was doing something over in shared land plantation area.
So you didn't think of Benworth Park at all?
Pardon me?
The Benworth Park.
I think we've got a lot of amenities at Benworth Park right now. You know, it's, it's crowded. I rode over there there last night. I try to make my weekly excursions out to look at the parks, but, I mean, the, the people out there are so dense. It's, I, I, I think we'd probably do better if we remove it to another park, because we got a lot of traction there at, at Benworth. I can appreciate the, the thought. But in talking with them, we have submitted... But in talking with them, we have submitted application for a grant with Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. And, you know, the timing is immaculate, because they're going to let, we've already submitted a letter of intent with Valley Baptist, and they're going to be interviewing us probably within the next couple of weeks to see whether or not they'll be able to participate. And if they're able to participate, it would cover the cost of the first one. The second one, we told them we're interested in doing at least two or three if possible, but there's 20 grants that are going out in the state of Texas right now. And so we're, you know, they're going to have to weigh it out. I told them we would definitely need it due to our obesity and our diabetes down here. And they were really promising, but they can't guarantee they'd give us two. But they like the fact that we just jumped in and are presenting it to the council today. And we'll probably get a positive remark back in the next couple of days.
Awesome. Thank you.
But hopefully, you know, we'll be able to let Valley Baptist support a full project without their support from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'm ready to entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second, and this is an opening for any final questions by the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 19 is approved 5-0 and move forward with the grant. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Call for item number 20. Mr. Ramirez, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Item number 20, authorization to purchase desktops and laptops via DIR contract DIRTSO 3765. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase 40 laptops and 75 desktops to replace end-of-life systems posing a security risk from Dell at a cost of $175,62112 via DIR contract DIRTSO 3765.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is an opening for final discussion. All those.
Are these going to a particular department, or they're just going to be spread out to whoever needs them?
It's, we did an assessment, and based on that, it's various departments throughout the city, including the library, we have animal shelter, Boys and Girls Club, Public Works, CWG, CD Sec. It's any computer that has, currently has Windows 7 and will need to replace because of security reasons.
So there was an assessment made?
Yes, correct.
And those are the ones that are being replaced?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Plata. You have a question.
Have you reviewed the assessment that was done a couple of years ago and see, can you let us know in a, maybe not next meeting, how are we doing with it? How much have we fulfilled all of those needs that we have?
Sure.
And also, we need another assessment at this time, because it's been, you know, with computers, everything changes within six months.
Yes, we're doing a sense for a network assessment. We're doing a server assessment. Basically, we cover every technology and make sure. And then part of the, the other items that we're going to present, that's part of the assessment we already have made.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hi, sir. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Pretty good. Good. The other time they came in for approval of other computers, and we had asked Assistant Chief Tittle in reference to the Mission Police Department and their laptops, and they said that we were good for 20 years. But I wanted to make sure that you go over there and make sure they have sufficient laptops and services and all that, because I know that you're in IT, so everything, even every year, we're growing, and so things change. So I want to make sure that everything's up to par over there, and people do have laptops.
Yes, we'll do an assessment of PD as well.
Okay.
And one of the other PDs included as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Get together with Mr. Borman and get his up-to-date technology plan, you know, and when to replace him and so forth.
Will do.
And upgrade it with the new software that the PD needs.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 20 is approved 5-0, and calling for item number 21. You have the floor, sir.
Item number 21, authorization to purchase enterprise VoIP telephone system via DIR contract DIRTSO 4355. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase VoIP telephone system to replace current end-of-life system to include police department from Mitel at a cost of $558,550.72 via DIR contract DIRTSO 435, 4355, sorry.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is an opening for discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 21 is approved 5-0, and calling for item number 22. Mr. Ramirez, you have the floor, sir.
Item 22, authorization to purchase cable and technology equipment via TIPS contract Task, staff is seeking authorization to purchase cables, switches, UPSs, and racks for telephone system infrastructure and to replace end-of-life equipment posing a security risk from, to include police department from Telepro at a cost of $4,575,849 via TIPS.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the cable that you're buying a Cat 5 or above?
It's Cat 6A. We're doing Cat 6A, which is a 10-gig infrastructure.
It's above Cat 5. Yeah, it's needed. Thank you. Any other question?
On items like this, you don't go after bids?
Yeah.
I know, but I mean, I know they are by-board, but nobody in the valley has offered that equipment?
Yes, this company is, Telepro is from Mission.
Where are they from?
Mission.
Mission.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Calling for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 22 is approved 5-0, Mr. Ramirez, and calling for item number 23.
Mayor, there wasn't a motion made on this yet.
Huh? We have a motion now.
Second.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item number 23, you have it, sir.
Item number 23, authorization to purchase technology equipment via DIR contract TX DIRTSO 41673763, 4160, 4093, and Omni contract 4400006644. Staff is seeking authorization to purchase switches, server storage, and a firewater place current end-of-life equipment posing security risk and created disaster recovery site from inside at a cost of $304,219.85 via DIR contract 41673763, 4160, 4093, and Omni contract 4400006644.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 23 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 24. Mr. Prades, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Item number 24 is the approval of the purchase and installation of commercial carpet flooring at the Sherem Municipal Golf Course Clubhouse via TIPS contract 20110201. The carpet flooring in the clubhouse will be done by DS Floors and Interiors. The cost for the removal and disposal of existing carpet and installation of the new commercial flooring is $40,873.7 via TIPS contract 20110201. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. In this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 24 is approved 5-0. Mr. Prades, and calling for item number 25. J.P., you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Item 25, authorization to award bid for chlorine gas chemical for the Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. The city of Mission has accepted an open one-bid response for chlorine gas chemical. Staff recommendation is to award bid to DPC Industries, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on as needed basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. In this, I open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries item number 25 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 26. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Item number 26 is approval of the December 2021 financial statements. Total revenues for the month were $18,529,111, and total expenditures were $12,114,837, leaving an ending fund balance of $38,130,249. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, ma'am.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any question by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 26 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 27. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number 27 is the acceptance of the quarterly report as required by the Public Funds Investment Act, Section 2256.023 of the Texas Government Code, on the total investments for the quarter ending September 30, 2021. The total increases to investment balances for the period were $8,819.81, and total decreases were $3 million, leaving a total of $21,212,53.55 in outstanding investments for the quarter ending September 30, 2021. The total interest earned on all funds year-to-date was $80,054.56. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is an opening for discussion or any question by the council.
I just want to, how are we doing with the audit?
We're working on the audit. We're trying to get it done by, to have it ready for the next meeting. We've just been working on it really hard. We should at least have preliminary statements ready for you soon.
Soon. Next, any questions by any of the council members? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 27 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 28. Our purchasing agent, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Staff is seeking authorization to enter into an interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Region One Education Service Center for future acquisitions, including hydraulic oil and lubricants pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act, Subchapter 271.102 A and C of the Texas Government Code. A local government may participate in a cooperative purchasing program with other local government or local cooperative organization, and a local government that purchased goods or services under this subchapter satisfies any state law requiring the local government to seek competitive bids in the purchase for goods or services.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 28. Any questions by any of the council members?
I, I mean, it's not really a question, but we're getting lubricants and oils from Region One?
Well, it's the, part of the co-op, their negotiated prices for that is under Region One.
But is that the only thing that we're going to be and have access to, or?
No, we'll have access to more, but that's the one that's actually driving this. So they're under buy board, but not in our region for buy board. So we're not able to buy from them under the buy board contract.
Okay.
So, but they are under contract with Region One with the pricing that's favorable to us. So that's the reason to join this co-op.
Okay. It's just interesting.
It is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item number 28 is approved 5-0, and welcome Region One. Item number 29, Mr. Mendiola, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Department approval for pre-negot, no, we're getting, negotiation of fleet repairs, hourly labor rates, and parts markup. Requesting approval for pre-negotiation agreement with San Tex Truck Center, DBA Kyra Truck Center, and Mobile Services, our fleet repair hourly labor rates and part markup. Repairs will be done on a need, on a needed basis on sanitation units and determined solely by the city. The city reserves the right to acquire parts only to seek labor services in effort to apply cost savings. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 29. Any questions by any of the council members?
So do you, do you perceive a big increase?
I'm sorry?
Do you perceive a big increase on the hourly?
No, we don't. That's why we're trying to, trying to capture these labor rates right now. They have been going up. Last year, we were at 110 labor. Right now, we're looking at maybe 170 to 160 an hour rate, and that's if we go with local companies, big commercial companies. So we're trying to seek as much local as we can. Kyra also will be our warranty center when we get our new units in June. So we're trying to get them aboard as soon as we can.
And the units that we're getting in June are which ones?
Are residential units, the nine units that we went up for bid.
Okay. So we're getting nine new res-
Residential units.
Residential units. Good. Any other questions?
No.
More questions? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 29 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 30. Mr. Mendiola, you have the floor.
Authorization to purchase 477 residential refuge carts from Toter via HGAC contract number RC 218110. Due to the city's rapid growth sanitation department is requesting these refuge carts to keep up with the demand in the city's current services. Cost of purchase will be $3,897.44. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Hold on, hold on. Before I recognize it, I just wanted you to correct, I think you mentioned 3,000.
33,000.
I'm sorry, 33,000. Yes, correct the record. You are recognized as a motion and a second, and then we, any discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item number 30 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 31. Mr. Terraces, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. I come before you to present item 31. Authorization to purchase Falcon 4-ton asphalt recycler and hot box trailer from Cooper Equipment Company via Sourcewell contract 052417FRM. Equipment is utilized for hauling and dispensing hot asphalt for year-round payment and part home maintenance operations throughout the city of Mission with a cost of $47,737. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item number 31. Any questions by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and item number 31 is approved 5-0. Calling for item number 32, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 32, authorization to award bid to Frontera Materials for the purchase of pot and coal mix asphalt for the Public Works Department. We accepted an open four-bid responses for hot and coal mix asphalt. Staff recommends awarding bid to Frontera Materials, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on as needed basis. The contract terms is six months with an option to renew for two additional six-month renewal. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a floor and a second to approve item number thirty-two, any questions by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-two is approved five-zero, call up for item number thirty-three. Mr. Danny Silva, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Item number three, thirty-three is requesting adoption of an addendum to the employee lease agreement between the city of Mission and the Mission Economic Development Corporation. The Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors reviewed the current employee lease agreement that was adopted by Resolution number twelve eighty-four back in March of twenty-eleven, as well as the amending Resolution fifteen eighty-nine, which removed the limitation of six employees as a maximum leasable number of employees, and are recommending that the addendum be added to better define the lease agreement and oversight responsibility. The existing resolution specifies oversight of staff, but was silent to the C E O. The Board of Directors requests that it is in writing that C E O follow the city mission personal policy and that the C E O report to the city manager for personal matters. The existing agreement is also signed to employ compensation, and the Board of Directors would like responsibility over this. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
How am I making a motion, I just want a clarification.
Go ahead and ask the question before I entertain the motion.
So they want for you to report to the city manager, but the compensation, they wanna had, uh?
That's correct, the, the board wants fiduciary responsibility. Um, the question that had come up was, you know, requesting time off, following a personal policy handbook as far as dress code and, um, and just conduct. They wanted that to be the oversight of the city, but since the, the board, they wanted oversight of the financial aspect.
How do you feel about that?
Is that a, is that a deal breaker for them?
For the financial side of it?
Yes.
Um, well, I mean, with their corporation, they are a, you know, a separate entity that they do have to review the audits and all of that stuff.
Okay.
Um, so the financial side, they, they feel comfortable controlling or, or oversight as far as all expenditures, budget approvals, uh, all of our incentive agreements. That's what was really.
And then I remember, I recall, mayor, that we had said that we wanted to have council and their board meet, and we've yet to do that. We said that about a year ago.
Yeah.
I understand it's COVID and stuff, but these type of, we have questions just like they do, and so.
Pretty, pretty much the, the, I think the, uh, the approval of this lease agreement is just gonna say that, that Danny Silva is gonna be under the city manager for, and he has to adhere to the city policies that we have, and that the M D C board will be oversight, seeing the, the budget and the, and the, and the expenditures, you know, and what comes with that, which is the audits and stuff.
Correct.
The, 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 the bookkeeping and all that, that is done, uh, it's already done by the city.
So what is, Daniel, what does it mean when it says here silent to employ compensation?
Um, as, it means that there was no dictation on who set salaries for any positions.
It's just them, the board?
The board, yes.
For all, for all employees?
For all of this E D C employees, all the positions that are being leased out.
And the intent, the intent is that the city manager is gonna take over that, that, those recommendations based on, on, see, what's happening is that we have clerks and technology people and so forth over there that may be earning more or less, you know, or less than a regular city employee. You know, so, so it's, uh, that's why, that's why the, the, the board felt that it was best for the city manager to, to make those alignments of the, of the employees and, and the compensation according.
Yes, but all of the employees receive the benefits from the city, the benefits, correct?
Yes.
Insurance and all benefits.
And our re-.
So I don't see why, I don't see why don't we have that responsibility given to the city to where we work on the salaries for all the.
And, and, and it is, it is gonna be under the city manager.
Only not the salaries?
Yes.
No, that's not what it says.
If you wanna read section six. The lease agreement that, that does not address, it doesn't address the, the concept of, of dictating that a, a secretary over there is gonna be paid X number of dollars.
Where it says the board director will lie responsibility over this matter, over employing compensation.
If, if I, uh, item, item six of the agreements, or if I can, if I may, I, I can read it. Uh, basically, that was a question that I had for, for Daniel, and, and it reads, "The M D C board shall have the right to recommend that an employee be hired for any leased employee position. Such employee, having been selected by the C E O of the M D C and approved by the M D C Board of Directors, the Bo, the M D C Board of Directors shall have the right to choose the C E O of the M D C and negotiate the terms of the employing contract of the C E O. However, all prospective employees shall have subject to criteria set forth by the city for any employee and consent by the city manager."
So it goes back to the city manager?
Right. Some, some of the issues, uh, not all of the positions are, are unilateral. I mean, like, Chief Operating Officer doesn't exactly line up to a position at the city, and we've had that be the case multiple times, so. Their position was, they would like to hire for positions that the, the board feels are needed for Economic Development Corporation purposes, and then to set that stop. And, and everything's reimbursed by the E D C.
And I understand, but for something like that, you can have a different criteria, and you're gonna pay, you go, you can pay based on whatever criteria, experience, and, um, duties and responsibilities, but I think the city should have to say so. That's my personal view.
On all of the salaries, or just the, the, like, the Daniel's salary?
Well, on the salaries, I mean, you as the, as the C E O, right? I mean, of the, I mean, you can recommend, but I think that, you know, the, I mean, the city would have to approve that.
I can, according to the lease agreement, it goes, it goes back to.
Yeah, and, and if I can read section one, it says, "The C E O of the M D C shall report to the city manager of the city, and all the remaining employees leased by the city to the M D C will report to the C D, C E O of the M D C. However, will ultimately remain subject to city's personal policy and ultimately, ultimate supervision of the city manager in the same manner as any other employee of the city."
The way the board felt, that the operational part, they want for Randy to, or, or the city manager, whether it be Randy or whoever, the city manager of the city at the time, that they, they will be running operations.
And technically, that's the way it already was, as far as time and attendance, I fill out the form, and Randy approves it. It just, there was no language that says what the C E O's oversight was, it said what the staff's oversight was.
And ready for a motion?
Randy, are you comfortable with the way it is?
I, yes, I do, um, in, in the sense that, um, it is ultimately, uh, you know, the city manager approval based on the process of whether it's hiring and so forth. The only, um, administrative, uh, decision would be the salary of the C E O at that point would be, uh, determined, and of course, the co, uh, the term of the contract would be determined by the board. But, uh, as far as, uh, the employees, and, and Daniel would be, uh, reporting to the city manager. At the other day, they report to him, however, uh, as, as the city manager would be the ultimate, uh, supervision of that.
Randy, I have a couple of questions for you now.
Yes.
So does that mean Mr. Silva will come to all the meetings for the directors?
Yes, he already has.
Already?
Yes, he already started.
And then what about, um, so how many employees do you have, Daniel?
We have thirteen employees.
Thirteen.
And they'll be invited to Christmas parties and so forth, and I don't know if that's.
So all those thirteen employees, he will be the director of, but if anything comes up, he will come and let you know of things, but he handles it over there.
Yes, correct.
The way we currently, if an H R thing comes up, I go at Randy and to know me.
And, and, uh, and typically, that's a, we can, uh, call it per se a department director, uh, over their staff. That's, that's how it's, uh, being addressed at this point. Is, he would be the C E O, however, has staff reporting to him, any issues come to us.
Same concepts.
I guess, I, I would like to know, Daniel, and that's why I would like, like, a workshop with the, the Board of Directors, because, like, let's say that we have tons of wonderful events by staff, but we have, uh, directors that, I mean, are always there, and some of them are in this room right now. And so would it be okay or too much for us to ask that your staff also now take part in anything that we have in reference to any type of city event, for them to volunteer for that?
Yeah, we do for Thanksgiving or other activities.
And they have, and they have been included as, as, I mean, because, uh, since, uh, inception, they've been city employees, and so any and all benefits, uh, pertain to them as well, uh, holidays, vacations, uh, any of our personnel policy are currently, uh, pertain to them, because they are initially city employees, leased over to the M D C. So, uh, the least portion, portion of it is the M D C covers salary and benefits. Uh, they reimburse us, the, the city, uh, for their, for that expense, and so, uh, but at the other day, they are city employees, all of them.
Okay.
Why, why, why has it been a little bit difficult to get the board to meet with us as a council?
Hasn't been no request?
Yes, we requested.
No, you will did, but it hasn't been requested to the board. I'm a board member for M D C, and, and, uh, and Mr. Silva has not requested or put an agenda item for us to do collaborative meeting.
We'll, we'll set something up within the next few months to, to meet.
That's simple, you know?
So I think, okay, just to be clear, Ruben, I think your question was, who's gonna set the salary, right?
For the C E O.
For the C E O.
It's gonna be the, the, the M D C.
The board, and Randy's not gonna have a say in it.
I'm sure, I'm sure he can recommend, you know? He can recommend that, that to the, to the board, you know, but the ultimate, uh, according to the lease agreement, for his salary will be determined by the, by the M D C board.
But Randy is not required to attend the meetings?
I, I do attend all the meetings.
But he's not a voting member?
I'm not, I'm not a member, no.
The champ, you and, and Beto in this case, right?
Yeah, I can see how that's a little gray.
Well, let's give it a chance.
Yeah, I mean, we can always change it.
We haven't been this close to, 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 to get in it, you know?
Oh, pardon, we had the workshop, and then we discussed it.
Can we agree to everything except for that part? Uh, so we can move forward on at least some of it?
What part, yes, of course, again, what part did you want to separate?
The, the, the C E O, and only the C E O, I don't think that, that Randy needs to get involved in the other salaries, but just the C E O's salary.
Okay, so the motion would be to, to approve, uh, this employee lease agreement addendum, uh, with the exception of, of the C E O's salary, which will be taken up at the workshop.
Right.
And, and required and, uh, have the addendum, uh, agreement state that it requires the approval of the city manager for his compensation. And, and you, you can, it's, I mean, we can approve it and then send it back, and then M D C board can have an agenda item to either accept or, or, or do, or have, or, or we can have that workshop.
Is that the issue, that you want the salary to be approved by the city manager as well, or?
That's, that's what they, they want, they want, you know?
But, but aren't we saying we're gonna have a workshop prior to the moving forward with that? But I think that's what the, well, that's what my motion is. Well, the only thing is that I would like the workshop to be prior to May seventh. Obviously, there are several of us that are upper reelection, and so.
Just table the item, then. Just table the item and have the workshop. You know?
No, I mean, I'm okay with moving forward with everything, just the salary, I have some questions to the board if exactly what, what, what they wanted on that.
I think you would be wise to approve the employees agreement with, with, uh, with whatever you have, the issue was carved out.
Yeah, that, that, that was my motion, so I don't know if you wanna.
But you have to specify what carve out means.
Yes, yes, I did, I said, uh.
The salary of the.
C E O's salary.
Okay, yeah, we'll entertain the motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a second, and any final discussion by any of the board members? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, uh, motion carries five-o, item thirty-three, and for the record, it'll be Resolution number seventeen sixty-nine, so you can reference, uh, Resolution number seventeen sixty-nine.
Thank you, mayor, thank you.
Item number thirty-four, Mr. Perez, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, good afternoon, mayor and council. Item, um, thirty-four is a discussion and action on modifying COVID-nineteen, uh, guidelines. As, as Ms. Ida, we're, we're, um, looking at doing an amendment to our, our, our current protocols. Uh, basically, in, in summary, we'll be, uh, going from ten-day to five-days. Uh, and, and so currently, we are still practicing the ten-day. However, uh, we are, uh, recommending to move it to, uh, five-days as, as C D C has, uh, recommended. And so basically, it's a five-day quarantine. I am happy to announce that we have, uh, zero employees out due to COVID. Uh, so none of our employees are out, uh, thank God, to that, uh, because, um, you know, we've been practicing, of course, our, our sanitation is, of course, are also, uh, going through, um, our safety measures here. Um, aside from, aside from that, uh, we are, of course, looking at a vaccine clinic tomorrow, uh, at the Mission Event Center from eight to one. Uh, aside from that, that's the only change on the COVID-nineteen, we're, uh, allowing the employees to come back after five days, instead of waiting to ten.
Any question by the council?
I'm going to approve, mayor.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, so your items have approved, uh, item number thirty-four five-zero. Calling for item number thirty-five, Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-five is the approval of the attached budget amendments. We have four. In the Police State Sharing Fund, we have ninety-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. In the P D Federal Sharing Fund, we have ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars in expenditures to allocate the remaining fund balance for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. In the Designative Purpose Fund, which is the fund where we budget for our grants, we have a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars in revenues and expenditures for four grants. We have twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixteen for the Community Policing Development Grant from the U S Department of Justice that will be used by the Police Department for management software. We have a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars from the Niobriss Grant in revenues and expenditures from the Office of the Governor that will be used by the Police Department to complete software installation. We have thirty-five hundred dollars from the Walmart Grant Foundation in revenues and expenditures that will be used by Fire Prevention Department for program supplies, and we have six thousand dollars in revenues and expenditures from Petco that will be used by the Health Department for the purchase and implementation of shelter software system. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
We, we are motion, I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, any final discussion on the budget amendments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-five is approved five-zero, and call up for item number thirty-six, Ms. Lederma, you have the floor.
Mayor and council, item number thirty-six is to request from Si, from the sister city of Santiago, Nuevo León, to receive specialized training from the Mission Fire Department personnel for their region. Uh, the city of Santiago, Nuevo León, who is one of our sister cities, is requesting that we provide, um, two employees, um, that have been, uh, very well versed and trained to provide this training, um, in their area. This would be a regional training to include other municipalities, um, and most of which are, are our sister cities as well. This particular area has experienced, um, large, very large brushfires in the last couple of weeks, um, and they are really asking for the city of Mission to provide, um, our employees for their training, uh, their specialized training for their area. I come here seeking authorization or approval from the council for this, for this training.
Mayor, I'd like to, to move that to executive session, if we could.
Yes, can it be done?
Legal question you have about this?
There is a legal question, yes.
Yes, you need some legal, okay.
I think Ms. Ida have.
Any other questions before, uh, any questions?
I was just making a comment, does this come from when we had, uh, Despedida at Simran, how the firefighters were there speaking on what they do in reference to the training?
Correct, so they, all of our sister cities were, were exposed or learned of our specialized, um, training that our, that our own employees provide, at which time, uh, you know, uh, mayor did extend the invitation to anyone that, that was needing that to go ahead and, and request it in writing. Due to the fires that this particular, um, area has been experiencing, along with them being located within a major corridor where they see, um, they often see, you know, large accidents or even, um, hazardous material spills. They just wanna get a better grip, uh, and better training for their, um, resources and their employees so they can be able to protect their citizens better.
Thank you.
They have done training before, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, they, the, our two individuals have provided, um, these trainings throughout Mexico, uh, representing the city of Mission.
Yes, and they also done the, the one here at S T C with the, with the Patronato de, de Nuevo León also.
Correct.
You know, which some of them service the, the cities. Uh, I, I do wanna let you all know that, uh, I, I did get called from the, a couple of the mayors asking for, for, uh, response teams, because, uh, and, uh, Vias Santiago, we're not familiar with their, uh, with their, uh, terrain. They have a, uh, the Colic Arayo, that's, uh, we all heard of the Colic Arayo, and a lot of us go in there and so forth. But above that, the Colic Arayo is three thousand meters of a mountain that runs, that runs all the way through, uh, through, uh, Ayende and, and Montemoreros and so forth. So they had a, a major brushfire that, that, uh, that was very dangerous to life. You know, so I, I did ask them to, to, to contact our, um, embassy in, in Monterrey and requested up the federal ranks, uh, because, uh, Mission is part of the, uh, Task Force One, and in order for us to, to send Task Force One out there, uh, from the Rio Grande Valley, we have to have, uh, federal permission, federal permission to, to, to cross over, because it's a different country. So I, I gave them the protocols, what to do, at the end of the day, I don't think they did it, because we never got activated, uh, Task Force One. You know, so, so, uh, but, but that's what their, their, their endear need, uh, of it, because they're having extreme drought problem, uh, that will. La Boca del, del Cerro is, is at five percent capacity, you know, which makes it ninety-five percent empty of water. And those of us that have been in the, in the boat rides there and so forth there, understand that it will be, if you get on the boat, you're gonna be on, on dirt, not on water, so. So they're having a, a big, major problem, serious concern, and, and sense of urgency for them for this training is, is, is great and high, so. Any other questions? Do I entertain a motion?
Well, it's going to.
It's moved to executive.
Oh, yeah, the executive session, so, okay, I'll hold, I'll hold on it, and then, on item number thirty-six, we can add it, Mr. Martinez under. So, thank you, Mr. Lerma, and Bao, you have item number thirty-seven also, go ahead, you.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-seven is discussion and action on animal control inter-local agreements with the cities of Alton, Gran Heno, and Palm View. The animal control services inter-local agreements with the cities that I just mentioned have expired, and these communities would like to renew their animal control service agreements with the city. The city of Mission has continued to provide limited services to these communities. The city of Mission has experienced an increase in stray and unwanted or owner-surrendered animals, along with the intake from these cities, which has caused the kennels to be overcapacity on a very regular basis. While rescues remain a vital component to our operations, COVID has hindered these actions or these efforts, and those of transporting animals out from the shelter quicker. We are still under construction of the new offices and warehouse, as well as making repairs to the shelter and reviewing the overall operations of the animal control services. Staff recommendation is not to renew the agreements at this time and to reevaluate in six months.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Plata, you're the one person to speak, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to go by the recommendation of the staff.
But before I accept the motion, Ms. Ortega, I have a question, go ahead.
Do we have like a secondary option for them in meantime for the six months?
We don't.
We don't.
We don't have, that would be up to them to decide what it is they would do. We would give them a minimum of two weeks, a two weeks' notice for them to put other measures in place. There may be another community that does what we do, and they may be able to sign on with them. They, they have the option of going with Palm Valley Animal Shelter as well. I'm sure that that would have to be discussed by their leadership.
Mr. Martinez, add number thirty-seven to executive session now that this, this discussion, I have some, I have some legal questions.
Yes, sir.
To consult with your attorney.
Well, I just wanna, before we even go to executive session, I'm, I'm totally against this recommendation by staff. I feel that this has already been in plan for quite a number of years, and for us to tell these local cities, there is no other municipality close by here that's gonna be able to do this, and Palm Valley does charge quite a bit, and so I think we need to come up with something before we do this. But we can discuss it in executive.
I'll reserve my comments till I talk to, to, to legal person. I need legal advice for this.
Yes, sir.
So, any other wanna comment?
Well, I, I'm with the staff recommendation. I think that we need to concentrate on, on heads that are here in Mission, and since we're overstaffed, I think probably best to go with the staff recommendation.
I guess when we come back out of executive, we'll have a motion in a second to do.
Yes, well, the, once you answered my, my legal question, I wanted to be, I reserve, I reserve the right to use the executive session as a legal advice.
We'll come back to the motion in a second.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ms. Lerma, unless you have anything else to add?
That would be it. Thank you, Mayor.
City manager's comment, routine?
I guess, a, a couple, quite a few items to present tomorrow, Tuesday, March twenty-ninth. We are hosting a vaccine clinic at the Mission Event Center from eight to one. We also will be distributing drive cards tomorrow. Also, on Wednesday of this week, also March thirtieth, from nine to one, we do have a, the retro vaccine drive, uh, drive-through event at the Mission Event Center. And just to report, we've issued over five thousand, I'm sorry, almost eight thousand card, drive cards, approximately four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred is what we've distributed so far. We still have cards available and then also funds available, so we will be doing that tomorrow and Wednesday. On Thursday, March thirty-first, we will be doing a community food distribution at Lions Park from nine to eleven. That is free to the public. We will be coordinating that through Lions Park. Also, on Friday, April the eighth, we do have at six-thirty, music in the park for the community, another free event for the community as well to enjoy. We do have a lineup of, of individuals performing. Again, that's Friday, April the eighth, six-thirty PM. On Saturday, April ninth, we do have, from one to three, we have an Easter egg hunt at Spear Memorial Library, and then we are planning our annual trash bash that, that, that April ninth as well, at eight AM, check in at Lions Park, at nine AM, trash pickup, and noon, volunteer picnic there. We do have information posted for the community, Mission Boys and Girls Club to sign up for volunteers. We will be coordinating that with them. And then also, we're planning a, a larger event on Saturday, April the twenty-third, just to mark everyone's calendars, from nine to four, Mission Community Roundup. It would, it would include live performances, children's activities, that is a neighborhood fair as well. We do have sort of resources available at that, at that location, it is gonna be at the Mission Event Center, and CDVG Department is coordinating that for more information. We will be posting all this information in our website and our, our social medias, and then, of course, in our community calendars. That's what, I, I do also, sir, wanna take the time to introduce our deputy city attorney. She's here with us, that started last week, Ms. Esther Pena. You wanna stand up for the council?
Please go up to the podium so the, so the camera can.
Hello, Esther Pena, pleasure to, to be here and to meet all of you, and I'm happy to be here with the city of Mission. I'm former Mission High School Eagle, I'm from Mission, and it's very good to be back here in my community to serve, to serve the city, and I'm, I'm here at your pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor's comments is gonna be short, I just wanna personally thank all the staff members that did the, the spring break, the, the spring break event, you know, from Monday to Friday, you know, that it was something else, I had learned a, a new activity called red light and green light, you know, so, uh, I, I really enjoyed myself, and I'm sure that all the children that were there, from what the comments that they were telling me when I spoke to them there, that they were, that they, they were very happy. So the creator of that project, you know, good, kudos to you, you know, thank you for bringing it forward, and, and thank you for taking the approach to doing something different for our community, and I do wanna thank the community itself, because the community came out in, in not only in, in, in numbers, but also in pride. You know, they brought, they brought in their, their, their children, and, and all of us had two hours of great fun, you know, and thanks to the police officers and the fire, fire department, and, and, you know, and especially, I, I don't know if you wanna identify anybody particularly that, that, that did a yeoman's job, besides everybody else that was there, you know, you, you, I'll let you have my, my comments.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, thank you for recognizing staycation. Certainly, this was a new idea that was brought forth by Ms. Amy Tejera. Amy has joined the executive department to plan, to help us assist with more community events and assist us with those that are already in existence. Staycation turned out to be fabulous. We saw over, over five hundred, between five, between five hundred and a thousand people at each one of the parks. We provided almost three thousand meals or snacks for the kids. We invested, what I say pennies on the dollar for, for the return on the investment that we received on this. We think that next year will be bigger and better. We had minimal support from vendors, just because we didn't anticipate how well this was going to be, but certainly for next year, we can, I can certainly under, see that this is going to be completely underwritten by the community as a, as a, as a resource, as an event for our community, for our kids. I think it was very well received.
Thank you, Ms. Lerma. I also wanna, looking forward for the Conway Bash, the Conway Bash, you know, that's coming in, in, and I don't know exactly, do you have a date for that already?
No, sir, and, and what, what the mayor referred to is, is another idea that we're, you know, putting together to, to go along with the music in the park, and so we want to invite our downtown merchants for an evening of, to, to be open in the evenings for a, a couple hours, where six to nine, six to eight, but primarily to have a focus of, of our citizens and the community to gather around the, the downtown placita, but also set up vendors up and down Conway, so that way everyone can, can visit our existing downtown businesses as well as expose their businesses to our local community, so that's something that, that we're working on, as well as, in conjunction with the music in the park. So that, once we have that planned and organized, we will share that with everyone, because we are planning that event to be a, a larger event, and so we'll, we'll keep everyone posted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If you recall the, when, we had the event, when we closed down the Conway from four-ninety-five all the way to First Street, and we allowed our children and our people to walk, to run, or to ride a bicycle, and, and some of them, some of the vendors themselves voluntarily, because we didn't plan for it, kind of opened their, their doors and started doing sidewalk sales and so forth, you know, that, that's pretty much aligned to the same thing. The only thing is that we, we wanna maybe reduce from four-ninety-five to, to, so to help the, the police department, because I know it was a task and a half for them to be able to close downtown, but even that event was very successful, and, and we had, I remember that one of the persons had walked from the, from the park all the way to four-ninety-five and, and had not walked at all, because he was physically disabled, and he, and he, and that was his first major walk, and him, and, and, you know, and, and I had the opportunity to walk with him for, for a little while. Of course, he, he was faster than I was, so he, he went forward to be, in, in front of me, but, but it is what it is, you know. He, he was very happy to get the opportunity to be the first one, the first place to, to be able to walk, since he was confined to, to his bed for, I don't know exactly the details on it, but, but I know he was very, very happy, and I think, Ms. Lerma, we mentioned it to you, that the individual, you know, and, and, and a lot of the children still are telling me when we're gonna do it again, so that's why we can do it aligned with the, and the music, the, the music in the, in the park is, is wonderful, because a lot of the young, young individuals' talent is, is, is being displayed by, during the time, you know, and, and Compalet does a good job also, you know, doing the MC, you know, as, as far as that is concerned, and thanks to Parks and Recreation, who, I think there was an idea that came through Parks and Recreation to be able to open that. And it does afford the opportunity for us to use downtown, and, and, and that's, and downtown will always be the heart of Mission, you know, we'll never forget that. So without further ado, I'm gonna have the council, Ms. Ortega, you have the floor.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Plata?
No comments.
Ms. Carza?
I have no comments, Mayor.
Mr. Bella?
No comment.
Okay. Without further ado, then I will entertain a motion for the executive session pursuant to BTC A government code section five-five-one point zero-zero-one. Do I have a motion?
Tom moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
One.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we go into executive session, five oh is the vote. I'm ready to entertain a motion to reconvene.
Mr. Move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we'll go with the item, uh, agenda item number thirty-six. Mr. Martinez, what is it?
Yes, sir, number thirty-six is a motion to, to approve the request as a one-time training to be held in, in Mexico, with the intent of it being the last one and the rest being held here in, in the future.
In a train-to-trainer mode?
Correct, correct. As discussed in executive session.
As discussed, okay. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, second?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-seven, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, sir, there was a, there was some, there was much discussion, and it requires a motion to renegotiate the contract with the directive that we discussed in executive session.
Tom moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item thirty-seven is approved, five zero. Call in for executive session, item thirty-eight A. Mr. Martinez, what do we have?
Yes, this item requires a motion to participate in mediation and move forward with the demands discussed and agreed in executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
Tom moved.
Do you have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item thirty-eight A is approved, five zero. Call in for item thirty-nine A.
That requires a motion to order appraisal update on property located thirteen oh one East Eighth Street, and to also research the possible funding of said by if, if needed.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item thirty-eight, thirty-nine A is approved, five zero, and do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, adjournment.